Good morning. Welcome to this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners, I'd like to call it to order. Today is July 15th, it's 9:00 AM in the morning, and we'll move on to item two. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, that will move on to item three, any citizen desiring to be heard. Hearing none. Move on to item four, consideration of possible action on minutes of June 30th, July 1st, and July 2nd. That's for the approval of or acknowledgement and approval of.
I'll move that we approve as presented.
I will second.
Have a motion in a second on to approve the minutes and any further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. Okay. Item five, consideration of possible action on final plat of Cottonwood Lake Section Two, in the northeast quarter of 36, 15 north, 3 west. Gentlemen, would you like to talk about your plat that you're filing, right quick?
The plat that we're filing is to attach the first phase of Cottonwood Lakes, which is a single-family for-sale community, to a secondary community known as Brighton Ridge that is affordable for rent community. So this kind of fills in the piece in between the two. We've created, based on residents' feedback, we've created a secondary entrance to where they're truly split, to where you're not going to be able to drive from the for-sale side to the for-rent side. And that will be, it's all engineered, it's coming off of Simmons Road.
Okay. And gentlemen, I do see item three on their notes, all streets are private and shall be maintained by the Property Owners Association.
I'll move we're approved.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved without exception. I don't want to go next door, I'll let you know if there's stickies on me.
I'll just have to weigh this out or it'll see.
Okay. Slide it away. As you file those, they're all about to go together. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They'll be back in two months for the next one.
Appreciate y'all, they'll be before the dawn. Before the dawn, that's good.
Right. Thank you. All right. Anything else on item six? Hearing nothing. Item seven, receive financial transaction reports from Sherri Longnecker, County Commissioner. Thank you for.
I mean, each of you have packed it. And basically, this is a recap of all, every, all the money we took in last fiscal year. So it's going to tell you what we did last fiscal year, and where we ended, and where we're going to start off this fiscal year. So I have them in order as I'm going to go over them. The first, I'll go over them just real quickly with you, and then you can look at them in detail on your own later. So the first one is our investments. So these are the CDs that we have, that'll tell you what bank they're in, when they're going to mature, the interest rate, and the principal amount of the CDs. So the total amount that we have in CDs is at the bottom. The interest rates have, you know, dropped drastically, so we still collect around, like 24,000 to 28,000 on interest home CDs, so. The next report is the protest tax. I told you I'd get back with you on the protest tax. Nothing's changed since the last time I reported to you. It tells you the tax share of the school district it's in, and who is protesting, and the amount that they're protesting. We only have protests and tax share 19 and 20, all the others haven't settled. We're still at the 1.2 million that's held up in protest. The ones that have zeros beside it at the very end means that those have all been settled. I got, as you said, he did talk to ETC, Texas Pipeline, and they have agreed to settle and pay 100% of their money that's in protest with the Masiata tax cut on, we'll get all of that money. We haven't heard anything on the rest of them.
Sherri, one of the things that I look at is trends, and it appears that in 2020, we've got almost $900,000 in protests, and 2019, we've got 300,000 or whatever. Is there, was there something that happened in 2020 that caused more protests?
Well, the, you know, the oil crashed, and they, that these companies didn't have, you know, the money, and, you know, and then they don't like them, since they weren't getting money, and they aren't going to pay that much in tax.
Sure, that would come.
That's what I, you know, I think. Because used to, you would only get maybe one company that would protest every year.
Right.
And then some years, you would get none. And then, then 2020, you know, of course, was the biggest year that we ever had.
Right, it looked like a spike.
Yeah, it definitely.
Okay.
So the next report is the revenue collection report. This is only for county general, and this gives us a recap of what we collected in 2020 and what we collected in 2021, and it will tell you where the money came from. This is our revenues, this helps build your budget. So it'll tell you the revenue, the grand totals at the bottom, what we brought in in 2020, and what we brought in in 2021, and then the difference in how much we went up. Now, I will tell you that the million that we did go up is because of the CARES Act.
Yeah, I pay.
Yeah. The percentage is on the side, will tell you if they went up or down. So this just kind of tells you, it compares one year to the next, so it tells you if you, you know, did better or worse, or whatever. So this, me and Troy, we kind of budgeting, we agree with this a lot. The next report is a monthly SA and I report. This one is a recap of the whole entire year, so I put all 12 months together. I do one of these each month, and this basically balances everything back to the banks. This is every income fund, everything that we have in the county, all money brought in, including schools, cities, towns, all the trust accounts, everything. So basically, the first line of money that you see is like our beginning balances, and then the collections is next, the money we brought in. The red payments are money we dispersed out, and then, of course, your ending balance on that very end. So the top part is like our ag war, miscellaneous receipts and mortgage tax, and then the middle is all your individual funds. Trusts and agencies are listed at the bottom, as we're just a pass-through for them. And the second page is the officer's trust accounts, so that's the official depository. That money is held at Interbank, our other money is held at Flomers. So this basically tells, and then the last page is the bank reconciliation. So that's where I go in and put reconciliations of the bank to show you that we bounced to the bank. And like I said, I send one in monthly to state auditors, and then I just did a recap of the whole year, instead of doing 12 of those. The next one is the general ledger. This is an entire year of general ledger. This tells you every bank, every investment, every fund, this, all the money in the entire county is on this general ledger. I do one every single day, we update it with the money that's come in, or money that's gone out, once it's paid out. So the first funded portion is your beginning balances, the second one is your deposits that's come in, and the red is the checks that we've paid out, and the other apportionment is the last one, that means money we've brought in, and then I portioned it out on the 15th and 31st. So that's the total amount of money that we collected, and then your ending balances. And these ending balances do not include outstanding warrants or POs that you have money encumbered in. This is just like, this is just like a checkbook registry of your own. You have, you know, a balance, and it only knows, you know, checks that have cleared the bank. But it just kind of gives you a recap of what each fund has. The last report is the apportionment report. This is an apportionment for the entire year. I do an apportionment twice a month, the 15th and 31st, but this one is a recap of the entire year. So this basically, on the left-hand side, it tells you where the money came from, the sources, and at the top, you have the funds. And so you can find your fund, and go all the way to the bottom, and we'll have, it's several pages, so just because it's an entire year, it will give you a total at the bottom for those funds, the total that they brought in. But it'll tell you each source, where the money came from, and then it also has on here the, besides our funds, it has the cities and the schools, how much money we've sent to each city, and that's on section B, and it will tell you where the money came from, prior, back tax, which they don't get any tax, it's, well, City of Guthrie have the sinking fund, the levy, so that's why it says that. They get alcoholic beverage and motor vehicle tax, special assessments, so that's the money that we send to each of the cities. And then the next one is your school, or the EMSs, that shows you which each EMS gets, and the total warrants at the very end, that's the total amount that we sent to them for this, for that fiscal year. That's the total money that they got. The last one is your schools and your VOTECs, so you can find, on the left-hand side, each school is listed in each VOTEC, and at the top, it'll tell you if it's current, prior, or back. Mortgage tax, they get 100% of mortgage tax, they get a piece of the auto tax stamps, farm tax stamps, and then small things like state land reimbursement, aircraft penalty, and it'll tell you if it went into their general building or sinking funds, and the very last column will tell you the total amount that that school got for that fiscal year, and the bottoms is the VOTECs listed the same way. So this basically, this apportionment is a recap of every dime that came into this county, every dime that went out of the county, and how we got it. And.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
Give me a second. On the, on that last.
The apportionment?
Apportionment, right. I noticed on donations, there's an amount for the source, but it doesn't, it never, the donations don't show up in, going across.
Well, it depends on what fund that was for, it's not, you aren't the only ones that have donations.
Yeah, I understand, I was just looking for page.
You gotta go over, if I was to give you just the one-month apportionment, or the every-two-week apportionment, they're easier to read.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's helping.
Yeah, because the, because it's a whole entire year of information, it's on several pages, whereas the other one would just be one page.
So the individual accounts, if you printed them on one page, would go across to where money's at.
Yeah.
I get it, okay.
Yeah, it's.
All right, thank you. And then I have just one other question.
Yeah.
Under the Treasurers' General Ledger for 2020 through 2021, is there a significant reason why Farmers and Merchants Bank has the majority of funds on deposit?
Yeah, that's the bank that we use for payroll, all of, all of your cash accounts and the general account is there. It's all the same bank account.
Right.
So as far as the bank's concerned, it's one bank account, but as far as we're, we break it down into each fund and each sub-account on our appropriation ledgers.
I was just, I mean, just curious, you know, of the $14,000, or $14 million that we ran through there, that we began in balance, beginning balance was $14 million, ending balance is 20, that, you know, almost a little over $18 million of that is in, at an impact.
Yeah. You can't split those accounts up.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking you to do that, I'm, what I guess what I'm asking is, is there a way that periodically we can rotate between different banks? Is our primary bank?
No.
Okay.
It's impossible.
Please explain that to me, then.
We have checks.
Right.
That we write for payroll, we write for, it is so hard, number one, you don't have a lot of banks that can pledge us. Farmers and Merchants can pledge us, I can call them right now, and they can get us a line of credit. There are several banks that they can't, they don't have the collateral backing to pledge us. Now, we have, Interbank is our official depository. You have to have different banks for your official depository, as with your general account. They can't be in the same bank. So Farmers does not charge us any fees. We used to be with Bank First about, well, when I came in 14 years ago, they wanted to charge us $500 to $800 a month just to have our money there. They didn't want to pay us, they wanted us to pay them. So I didn't think that that was right, so I took it out of there, and I moved it to Farmers. They have not, never charged us any fees for anything, stop pays, anything like that.
They don't charge for my safe deposit boxes.
Okay.
But there's no way that you can just move money from one bank account to another. It doesn't work like that, because.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking to move from one bank account to another, but is our, so Farmers and Merchants seems to be our primary bank.
They are.
Where all of the funds are. What I would like to see is a letter that maybe goes out to some of these other banks, asking them whether or not they can, can do what you've said as far as insuring our funds.
There, I've already, I've been here 14 years, I already know all that.
Okay, but we don't.
Well, I do.
That's my point.
Well, the point is, is I'm the treasurer, and I get to say what banks that the money goes in, number one.
Okay.
So IDC Bank is, has horrible customer service. Bank First wants to charge us. OSB was our official depository, they got bought out and went corporate, and they couldn't back us, so I had to move it over to Interbank with the official depository. So that's the only banks we have in town, and I believe that we should keep our money local, so I do not go outside Logan County. I have to take the deposits to the bank every day, so I'm not going to drive it up home to city. So that is why. So that's the only banks, that's your choices right there. Now, we have CDs.
You just said, "We don't get a choice, you get the choice."
Yeah, it's up to me where you want to go.
Okay, then I'm finished talking to you, thank you.
It's fine.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Longnecker.
I'll move we're making.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item nine, consideration of possible action on resolution establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of Simmons and Sinner Road. This is something that I put in, I've had a lot of people call in about that intersection. There's possibly multiple accidents at that intersection. It's a curve coming from north and south, and then, of course, you get a lot of people turning on to Simmons Road there for the housing additions that are on that, in that area, and it's been causing a lot more concern, so. In order to try to slow traffic around that curve, that line curve, I figured this would be the best solution that we had.
Okay. Sherri, you got.
Are you going to be putting any warning devices leading up to that stop?
Yes, we will be putting stop sign ahead signs, and in fact, right there at the other corners, we're also talking about putting some guardrails and stuff to kind of make that intersection a little more safer.
Any questions, Juan?
I've been having that one, yes.
Okay.
In fact, I'll move we're approved.
All right, well, I will, I will second, because that's what the commissioner wants to do.
Yes.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
What time period are you looking at for those?
Probably get them up before the weekend.
Oh, cool. You got stop bars going to be painted on the roads?
No.
Yeah, right, you probably need.
Eventually, yeah.
You're going to need stop bars to make that work, right? You know, so. We can come out with a roller and a five-gallon bucket of white paint.
There we go.
You know. All right. So moving on to item 10, consideration of possible action on contract with RRY Services LLC, $150,249 worth, bridge number 192, Pin Creek, bid number 2021-20, or, dash 22.
This is my project, and they're currently grabbing a pile and ton, so I would recommend we approve the contract.
Well, I will move we approve that.
I will second.
Have a motion in a second on item 10, on the bridge, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item 12, consideration of possible action on FY 2021 financial statement. All right. So moving on to item 10, consideration of possible action on contract with RRY Services LLC, $150,249 worth, bridge number 192, Pin Creek, bid number 2021 dash 20, or, dash 22.
This is my project, and they're currently grabbing a pile and ton, so I would recommend we approve the contract.
Well, I will move we approve that.
I will second.
Have a motion in a second on item 10, on the bridge, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item 12, consideration of possible action on FY 2021 juvenile detention services.
Item 11.
Item 11, oh, whoa, sorry, I missed that one. Consideration of possible action on resolution accepting payment from ACCO for damages to election board building in an amount of $32,254.22. Got to do the 2 cents, and depositing into the general government M&amp;O account.
So we received three separate checks, one for $13,563.65, that's to pay SERVPRO for the water mitigation, and then $51.48.16 for SERVPRO's mold mitigation, and then after the $25,000 deductible, a check for $13,542.21 for the building repairs that need to be done. And I have the checks and all the documentation, this is the resolution. This will allow this to go in directly, deposit it to the general M&amp;O rather than laying, you know, because we've switched with fiscal years, it's a budgeted account, so this allows us to make the adjustment to the budgeted account.
Well, before we accept, I mean, I get the insurance going directly, what, how much is it repairs?
I don't know what the estimate was, let me see if it tells me in here. We have all kinds of.
Stephen, you got anything on that? I mean, you've kind of been over there with them, so.
Where are we at on this project, I guess I should ask.
It's all dried out, and it's ready to start ripping out drywall, and replacing drywall, and insulation, and carpet, and.
The estimated cost of repairs, which are all spelled out by the square foot, was $38,542 with a $25,000 deductible, which left ACCO sending us a check for $13.5. We were at the very end of the fiscal year with this, so there was no funds available in the deductible fund to pull that 25 out of.
I get that. So do we have a contract or line?
In my computer, copies of twenty or something. They took each room and broke it down by square footage of what needed to be done to come up with their estimate. So, this might be what could be used to float out to a couple of local contractors and get some quotes back.
Well, should, should we make a call with the desk and ask them how come they're not?
Right.
Last time they contracted everything. I, I would like to do that as well and follow back up with them. And then maybe we put that on our agenda for next time to talk about what feedback we get back from ACCO and then what we...
And part two, that might be, there was something in the deductible fund and why they didn't do it that way. They put it back off on, on directly to us.
But I, I, we, we accept the funds from ACCO, see.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second on accepting the, uh, funds. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 12, consideration of possible action on FY 2122 Juvenile Detention Services. I'll make a motion and a second. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve Juvenile Detention Services. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item 13, consideration of possible action to cancel stale dated ones.
The address provided, the list of those warrants that exceeded one year without caution that we're required to cancel.
I'd like a stale date.
We're done with it.
I was just saying. With Chair, maybe you can handle that one.
Aye. That, you could. I think you could approve the cancellation of stale dated warrants. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 14, consideration of possible action on detention transportation claim in the amount of two hundred and twelve dollars and a few cents for May, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move with you.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve transportation claims. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 15, consideration of possible action to acknowledge receipt of notice of tort claims sent forward to ACCO County Claims, John Mitchell, Jessica Carson, and Ross Neelis.
I'll move we acknowledge and send forward to ACCO Claims. I have read one.
I will second.
The other two, I believe, are hot hold hits.
I will second. Have a motion and a second to acknowledge forward claims. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 17, discussion of possible action on resolutions appointing requisitioning officers for various accounts.
We only have one for OSU extension. I will tell you that it came with a letter from the extension director notifying the county that Amy Turner is, um, will become the acting chief county director for the Logan County Extension Office and therefore the requisitioning officer for placing the cabinet on the web. And Amy, you didn't sign in here, so just catch that on before you leave.
I'll make a motion with you. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the requisitioning officer appointment. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Sorry, I missed. No problem happened to me earlier. Okay. Item 13, discussion of possible action on resolutions appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
None.
I have none. All right. Item 18, discussion of possible action on the consent agenda. All right. Here we go.
We'll start with payroll. Kind of, Marvin.
There's also, she's got some tags here with her name on it for an extra signature.
Okay. Item 16, discussion of possible action on resolutions appointing requisitioning officers for various accounts.
We only have one for OSU extension. I will tell you that it came with a letter from, um, the extension director notifying the county that Amy Turner is, um, will become the acting chief county director for the Logan County Extension Office and therefore the requisitioning officer for placing the cabinet on the web. And Amy, you didn't sign in here, so just catch that on before you leave.
I'll make a motion with you. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 14, consideration of possible action on detention transportation claim in the amount of two hundred and twelve dollars and a few cents for May, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move with you.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve transportation claims. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 15, consideration of possible action to acknowledge receipt of notice of tort claims sent forward to ACCO County Claims, John Mitchell, Jessica Carson, and Ross Neelis.
I'll move we acknowledge and send forward to ACCO Claims. I have read one.
I will second.
The other two, I believe, are hot hold hits.
I will second. Have a motion and a second to acknowledge forward claims. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That's on it, too. Yep. Here's the last one, but we'll sign it. Everybody's signed it. Just takes two, success. All right. Item 16, discussion of possible action on resolutions appointing requisitioning officers for various accounts.
We only have one for OSU extension. I will tell you that it came with a letter from, um, the extension director notifying the county that Amy Turner is, um, will become the acting chief county director for the Logan County Extension Office and therefore the requisitioning officer for placing the cabinet on the web. And Amy, you didn't sign in here, so just catch that on before you leave.
I'll make a motion with you. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, requisitioning officer appointment. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Say aye.
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 Okay.
It's a little scary. You approve that and I'm playing solo kind of lonely.
Okay. Item 17, discussion of possible action on resolutions appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
None.
I have none. All right. Item 18, discussion of possible action on the consent agenda. All right. Here we go.
We'll start with payroll. Kind of, Marvin.
There's also, she's got some tags here with her name on it for an extra signature.
Okay. Can I help you?
Yeah, I'd like to see the, uh, most of ours, please. I'll bring it back up.
Sir?
Okay. Get my papers out of order.
I get it. After we get finished with our meeting, there would be probably time for that.
Glad. Now I gotta do a story. [laughing].
All right. So, moving on to item 10, consideration of possible action on contract with RRY Services LLC, a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars for bridge number 192, Pin Creek, bid number 2021 dash twenty, or dash twenty-two. This is my project and they're currently grabbing a pile of tons, so I would recommend we approve the contract. Well, I will move we approve that.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, requisitioning officer appointment. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. So, moving on to item 10, discussion of possible action on resolutions appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
None.
I have none. All right. Item 18, discussion of possible action on the consent agenda. All right. Here we go.
We'll start with payroll. Kind of, Marvin.
There's also, she's got some tags here with her name on it for an extra signature.
Okay. Can I help you?
Yeah, I'd like to see the, uh, most of ours, please. I'll bring it back up.
Sir?
Okay. Get my papers out of order.
I get it. After we get finished with our meeting, there would be probably time for that.
Glad. Now I gotta do a story. [laughing].
All right. So, moving on to item 10, consideration of possible action on contract with RRY Services LLC, a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars for bridge number 192, Pin Creek, bid number 2021.
I'll move with you.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve transportation claims. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 15, consideration of possible action to acknowledge receipt of notice of tort claims sent forward to ACCO County Claims, John Mitchell, Jessica Carson, and Ross Neelis.
I'll move we acknowledge and send forward to ACCO Claims. I have read one.
I will second.
The other two, I believe, are hot hold hits.
I will second. Have a motion and a second to acknowledge forward claims. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That's on it, too. Yep. Here's the last one, but we'll sign it. Everybody's signed it. Just takes two, success. All right. Item 16, discussion of possible action on resolutions appointing requisitioning officers for various accounts.
We only have one for OSU extension. I will tell you that it came with a letter from, um, the extension director notifying the county that Amy Turner is, um, will become the acting chief county director for the Logan County Extension Office and therefore the requisitioning officer for placing the cabinet on the web. And Amy, you didn't sign in here, so just catch that on before you leave.
I'll make a motion with you. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, requisitioning officer appointment. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 15, discussion of possible action on approving claims for payments for July, 2021. It's almost a short of a half million bucks. Not bad. Here?
The hat's down there. The bottom, right.
Okay. I didn't see a stamp. I was looking for a stamp.
Oh, blankets get stamped. Blankets, no. Quite technical.
It is. That's why we keep you around, man.
I was saying, the stock looks big, but this packets are big.
Yes. Hmm. Yeah. Hmm.
That's it for consent.
Let me get through that before we... Hit that off.
I'll maybe we approve the consent agenda items. We see something I don't like, then I'll bring it back in.
Okay. I'll second. Have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda items. Any further discussion? Hear you now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item nineteen, discussion of possible action on approving claims for payments for July twenty twenty-one. It's almost a short of a half million bucks, not bad. There.
Down, down there, the bottom, right.
Okay. I didn't see a stamp. I was looking for a stamp.
Oh, blankets get stamped. Plankets, no. Quite technical.
It is, that's why we keep you around, man.
I was saying, the stock looks big, but the packets are big.
I guess the election board didn't sign that.
Yes, that's a great counter.
Just didn't want to miss it.
I'll make a motion to approve claims. See if I can get...
Oh, I'll second his motion. Have a motion, I have a motion in a second on claims. Any further discussion? Hear you now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty, discussion of possible action on approving purchase cards payments for July twenty twenty-one in the amount of a total of one-thousand-seven-hundred-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Looks like for air conditioning units. Light switch. Door.
I'll make a motion to be approved. I'll second.
Have a motion in a second to approve, any further discussion? Hear you now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Sure.
Is that it on, that's it on P D R? All right. To page three. Any citizen desiring to be heard? As a note, speakers are limited no more than three minutes and must address an item on the agenda. Discussions regarding topics not on the agenda may be held with your commissioner after the meeting. Any citizen desiring to be heard? Hear you now, we'll move on.
Oh, yes ma'am.
Oh, yes ma'am, go ahead.
Um, I'm not on the agenda though. Like, I don't have any...
Do you want to talk about an item that was on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay. Who's your commissioner?
Um, hold on. I was sent by my husband. So Marvin Goodwin?
That would be me. I'd be happy to meet with you after the meeting.
Sure, thanks very much. All right, thank you.
All right. Uh, item twenty-two, comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners or other county officers and department heads. Sheriff, anything for you?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir. I've been getting phone calls about some things that are, uh, come from Washington DC on the possibility of them sending, uh, private strike forces in our communities inquiring about vaccinations and things like that. We don't know what it's gonna look like or even if it's gonna happen. Uh, but I can tell you, our stance is that if somebody comes to your house in this county asking about vaccines, healthcare, stuff like that, and you don't want them on your property, please ask them to leave. And if they don't, contact us and we will educate them on that. If we have to rest them in the book. A lot of people are concerned about the, uh, possibilities of this happening. You know, they just want to put their minds at ease that should this come to an end, we can, uh, Martin can ask us to do what the citizens ask us to do and we're being so desired. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, uh, Steven?
Yeah, um, I went out and did damage assessments with District One's, uh, Robert, your foreman out there. Uh, we did damage assessments for the state on the, uh, recent flooding in June first of July. We visited about twenty sites around the county. Uh, did that for about eight, nine hours, saying all that to the state. Um, I know Cody and Jim, or Roy, we went out, did District Two on their part. Um, tomorrow, we got state people coming in. They want to ride around and see a few of the sites. So I'll be showing them around tomorrow. And then I sent everything from the October ice storm that I had completed up until the end of May, uh, and it's all in the same hands and everything at home.
Thank you. I don't have anything to say this time. Uh, all the thing I got is, you know, we've got some dry weather and we're gonna start trying to get caught up on some things and, uh, get these roads fixed and hopefully get some repairs done after this, uh, rain event that we had. I mean, just that, this last week, we had another rain event, two and a half inches in thirty-five minutes. It was, you know, that amount, that amount of water will definitely cause some damage to our woods, so just be patient. Still get that.
With the ground or et cetera, it is a technical issue. Yes, sir. I have need to retract, I do have something. I got an estimate on the carpet for this room and, and I went for about, and it was three thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty months' rent, if y'all are not moving forward on that.
Yeah, I think that would be, that's all they're asking is the floor. So, but everything else is done. And I believe yesterday we got, uh, the air conditioner over in the courtroom and, uh, judge's chambers fixed. I believe that got done yesterday. I haven't heard each one yet, so I expect it'll be happy. Well, yes. I expect so. All right. With that, uh, item twenty-three, consideration of possible action on the German.
So, I'll say.
Have a motion in a second on the German. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, but that's rejected.